Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, February the 4th, 2025. We welcome you to this meeting. Thank you for joining us here at the City Council County Commission Chambers on that. As we usually do getting started, we'll start with a moment of silence and have our Pledge of Allegiance. As we go to that, please continue your prayers for our country as we continue to move forward in every way we can to make our country as good as we can have it. So, please pray for all the good things that we can have for 2025 as we move forward. Now, please join us. Open the silence. Thank you. I will ask our Scout Troop, will you complete us in our Pledge of Allegiance today?
Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome. We're glad to have Boy Scout Troop 271 and their troop leader, Paula Castleman.
That's it.
It's Charlie Chatlin.
It's Charlie Chatlin.
Okay. Oh, well, thank you for that, for sure. Well, thank you. Thank you, though, for being here and hope you enjoy our meeting tonight. And we'll be glad to talk with you after the meeting if you'd like for us to and answer any questions that we can. So, thank you for joining us tonight. We do not have any matters scheduled for public hearings, so I'm going to start the evening before we move to our consent agenda items and do a Black History Month proclamation for, of course, the month of February is Black History Month around our nation, of course, and we're proud of that. We're proud that we have so many that represent our community so well, including our two council members here, Ike Perkins, Councilmember Perkins, and Councilmember Chrissy Thomas. Thank you for leadership that you provide to our community, and we are honored that you're part of the City Council of Lenore. I've got a few names that I'm just going to talk about before we go to the proclamation, some of those who were leaders on our council. Our very first African-American councilman was Claude Urban back in the 70s, I think it was, on that. Larkin Horton also served the City Council very well. Mrs. Inez Jones was a fine council leader in our community. Of course, Mr. Sam Sturgis, a great community leader, and we appreciate all that he has done for our community as our Recreation Director and such a pioneer. Sylvia Green, one of our fine ladies who has passed away now, but Sylvia was a visionary and a fine leader. Sylvia will be honored later this month with the Caldwell County Visionary Award, and we're very excited about that. And later on here in February, Dr. Helen Hall. Dr. Hall is going to be the LA Dyser Caldwell Woman of the Year winner for 2024 this year, so she will be honored, and we're excited about that. Couple others I just thought about who were great leaders, RB Everett, if you remember, RB was a principal in our community. His wife Rosetta taught for many years. Mr. ML Devon was also an educator in our community and one of our good friends and still around that does leadership, Reverend Jimmy Norwood, who is a fine leader in our community. We had so many pioneers that are from the African-American community who were trailblazers, educators, historians, they're community leaders, artists, musicians, and just so many, and we're so proud that we share the diversity and equity and all the things that our community that we're proud of. So, going to present this proclamation tonight in honor of Black History Month, and we will shoot a picture with the council together after that if we will. Black History Month proclamation, where as since 1976, every United States President has officially designated the month of February as National Black History Month to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience. And whereas the United States joins other countries around the world into voting a month to recognize black history, including Canada and the United Kingdom. And whereas the observance of Black History Month began in 1926, when Harvard-trained historian Carter G. Woodson and Minister Jesse Moreland sponsored the first National Negro History Week, which was celebrated the second week in February, and later in the 1960s, as part of the Civil Rights Movement, the observance evolved into Black History Month. And whereas the 2025 Black History Month theme, African-Americans and Labor, focuses on the significant role that labor has played in the shaping of the black experience throughout history. And whereas much of the City of Lenore's honor, strength, and success can be attributed to the diversity of cultures and traditions that are celebrated by the residents of this great city. And whereas African-Americans have played significant roles and made lasting contribution to our city's history and the history of North Carolina's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development, while working tirelessly to continue, excuse me, to contribute to every aspect of American society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the contributions and the legacy of those who helped build our nation, fought against prejudice to secure lives of dignity and opportunity for all of our citizens, advanced the cause of civil rights for all Americans, and strengthened our families and communities. Now, therefore, I, as Mayor of the City of Lenore, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby encourage all residents to join me in honoring the many contributions made by African-Americans to our city, our state, and our nation, and to participate in the many educational and inspirational events celebrating February 2025 as Black History Month. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and calls the Seal of the City of Lenore to be affixed this, the 4th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2025. Congratulations. Proud of that. You want to shoot a picture now? Let's go do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's do it.
All right, that looks good. All right, y'all look good. You ready? One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. Did my flash go off?
Nope.
Didn't? All right.
I guess it's all without the flash.
I know, because I'm getting a dead battery here.
Get my dirty, dirty fingerprints off of the hands there. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you for that, and hopefully we'll have some great celebration. I think Mr. Hillbrand is going to be talking later about the events that will be going on during Black History Month, so to let you know what can, if you'd like to attend certain events, that would be wonderful. Glad for anything that you could be able to do on that. Before we move forward, we want to stop quickly and wish Councilman Ralph Presswood happy birthday. Let's see, it's this week?
Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday. He'll turn, how much?
Enough.
Enough.
Another day.
Another day. Happy birthday. Hope you have a fun day. All right, we'll move again. We don't have matters scheduled for public hearings. We'll move on to our consent agenda items consisting tonight of minutes of the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, January 21st. Item B is the proclamation for Black History Month, which we just did, in celebration of the month of February 2025 as Black History Month throughout our city. Item C is a Uniform Hazard Mitigation Plan update for 2025. This approval of this will be a attached resolution of adoption of the Uniform Hazard Mitigation Plan update. As background information, the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 states that local governments must develop an all-hazards mitigation plan in order to be eligible to receive future hazard mitigation grant program awards, funds, and other disaster-related assistance funding. The plan must be updated and adopted within a five-year cycle. Please note, the full 814-page document can be viewed at the following link, and that link is available on there. I will not read the link to you. Item D is McGill Associates PA. This is for Task Orders 1 and 2. Staff recommends approval of these orders, 1 and 2, as prepared by McGill Associates PA for civil engineering services related to the campus improvements project. This is for the OVT Pavilion slash former Leo Site and historic Old Lenore High School Gymnasium and Auditorium. Please note, the fee for Task Order Number 1 is $30,000 in lump sum. The fee for Task Order Number 2 is a maximum of $45,000 to be billed hourly as work progresses, not to exceed the $45,000. And Item E is an acceptance of an engineering services proposal for SKA Consulting Engineers Incorporated. Recommendation is that the council accept acceptance of an engineering services proposal for a 2025 concrete condition assessment of exterior treatment basins at the George L. Bernhardt Senior Rodeo's Lake Water Treatment Facility with estimated fees up to $65,000. That's the consent agenda items, A through E. I will open it up for any discussion, question, or motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through E as presented.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Perkins that we approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented. No other question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous, minus Councilmember Purdue, who is under the weather with us tonight. We wish him all the best. Okay, we will move on then to any requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning any particular situation, please come forward to the mic and give us your name and address, and we'll be glad to hear from you. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on then to reports of boards and commissions. And tonight, we have Mr. Rick Oxford, our Plan Administrator from the Western Piedmont Council Governments, who will hold a public meeting to receive public input and comments for the FY 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan for the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium and the FY 2025 Action Plan. This consolidated plan is required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, identifies needs, outlines goals, develops action plans, and prepares budgets for the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium for the use of community development block grant funding funds and home funds for the next five years, beginning July 1 of 2025 and ending on June 30 of 2029. Tonight, we welcome Mr. Oxford here. This will be one of the last times we will see him in this role, maybe. Mr. Oxford has announced his retirement as of March 31st, I think. So, we would like to say, Rick, we have enjoyed working with you. Congratulations to you. We hope you will enjoy your retirement and get everything straight before you leave so we can keep this thing rolling on that. But I know we've got a few other things to do later on that, but I wanted to say the congratulations to you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's been my honor and pleasure to work with the city over the years, so.
Forty of those years.
It's been good.
Forty of those years.
Forty years, yes. And then two years with the city prior to that. So, I've been around a while.
Been around.
Been around. So, but I'm here tonight to talk about the consolidated plan, which covers two grants that the City of Lenore receives. One's a CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant, and one is a home grant. And the City of Lenore serves as the lead entity for a 28 local government member consortium for that home grant. So, that means Lenore's responsible for all the compliance with all the federal rules and regulations for that program, and all the money flows from Washington DC to the City of Lenore, and then it's distributed among the four counties, Alexanderburg, Caldwell, and Catawba County. If you add up all the those four counties and all the municipalities, you get 28. So, each five years, we're required to do a consolidated plan, which is sort of an umbrella that looks at the needs and of the communities, and it says, this is our needs, this are our goals that we would like to address. And then each year, you do an action plan, and that action plan, you know what your budget is going to be from the federal government, and you say, with this action plan, we're going to do this this year. And it's one of the things that we identified under the umbrella of the consolidated plan. So, I don't have numbers yet because the federal government has not issued our funding allocation yet, so I will be back for a second meeting, at which time I will have the numbers, and we will have, we will present a budget. In the meantime, we've got a 30-day comment period if anyone, any of the public or any of you would like to make a comment or a recommendation or suggestion or if you have a question during our planning process. So, with the, let me start with the CDBG. That money comes directly to the City of Lenore, and last year, we received $138,000. Year before that, $142,000. Year before that, $153,000. Year before that, $161,000. So, it's gone down. And with that money, we address, it's not a whole lot of money, so we do what we think we can do with that amount of money, and we've used it for public facility improvements on the Old Lenore High School. And we've used it there for several years, and I think there's still a need for more funding there. So, that's sort of what we're looking at doing with that, our next year's CDBG money. And those monies become available July 1. That's the funding year. We have to jump through hoops to actually get the funds released, okay? So, any questions on the CDBG?
Any questions of Rick concerning?
Okay. Then I'll talk about the home program. The home program is called the Uniform Consortium, and the consortium was formed at the HUD suggested we do that back in 1995, and we brought all 28 local governments together, which allowed us to become, we're funded every year from HUD, Washington, and let's see, last year, we were, got too much stuff here. Last year, we were funded $951,000. Year before that, it was 1.2 mil. Year before that, it was 1.2 million. And then the year before that, it was 1.6 million. So, I don't know what it will be this year, okay? And so, the activities that we undertake with the Uniform Consortium, we have a down payment assistance program that's four county-wide that currently, we've had to modify as we go through time. We change our amount of assistance, and currently, we can provide up to $16,000. We, down payment assistance can be 8% of the purchase price, capping at $16,000. Our assistance is in the form of a loan. It's a zero-interest loan with zero monthly payment, and half of the loan is forgiven at year 10. So, to date, since the program's inception, we've assisted somewhere around 3,000 down payment assistance throughout the four counties. So, we try to keep that program, that activity funded all the time. So, we also fund what they call CHODOs, Community Housing Development Organizations. Those are nonprofit organizations doing housing-related activities. We're required by the home regulations to set aside 15% of our budget to fund those organizations, and we've funded organizations throughout the four counties. Then we also do multifamily housing developments, which are, we partner with low-income housing tax credit projects, where they're doing workforce housing, low-to-moder income apartment complexes. We've done several in Lenore. We've done Veridian, Arbor Glen. We've tried to do a couple others, Cats Corner, yeah. So, and we've done those throughout the four counties as well. And what we do with that is we make them a loan. It's typically $300,000, and it's 2% interest. They pay us back over 20 years. So, that money does eventually come back to the program. But our money is just a little drop in the bucket because these are, you know, 12, 15 million-dollar projects, you know, and they're usually somewhere 55 to 77 units. So, we have those throughout the four counties. And that's what we do with the home program. We do the down payment assistance. We do the CHODO funding, and we do the multifamily housing projects. And we link with projects, those multifamilies that are low-income housing tax credit projects. They're getting the majority of their financing through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And there's all sorts of requirements and regulations, and if they're going through that, we know they meet all those requirements. So, HUD will announce sometime in, I don't know, March, April. I think last year, we did our second meeting in the 1st of June. So, once I get those numbers, I'll get with the manager, we'll look at the budget, and I'll be back with, for your approval to submit the consolidated plan, which includes the first-year action plan to HUD for their approval and funding. Okay? Any questions? Yes, sir.
What's such, what's such a level of funding? You say we've got $900,000 for the consortium this year. Did we ask for like a?
That's appropriated by Congress. It's a formula that they put in.
Made on population.
Population, poverty rate, things like that. So, they tell us. We have no input.
I have a question, Rick.
Yes, sir.
For the home program, what is the income cap to qualify to purchase a home with the home program?
Am I ready for that question? For down payment assistance, again, HUD establishes those income limits, and they issue new income limits every year, okay?
Yeah.
For our newest ones, we haven't received 2025 yet, but so 2024, one person, for, say they're getting down payment assistance, they cannot make more, their gross cannot be more than $43,750. Two people, it's $50,000. Three people, it's $56,250,000. $56,250. Four people, it's $62,500. So, for example.
And those funds come from the Department of Housing?
Yes.
That's what we got to watch?
Yep.
Coming down from the Department of Housing.
Rick, with our population in this city, as well as surrounding cities, we are anticipating an increase, and we're looking for more people moving in. It doesn't look like the financial trend is keeping up with our growth. Do you anticipate this decline to continue, or will it be a steady point or rising?
I don't know. I would have thought we would have seen the increase over the last four years, but it went down. So, it does have to do with population increase. I think the more the population increases, the more funding we'll receive in both the CDBG and the home program. So, that, we don't know what that formula is that they, that HUD has exactly, so I'm sure it's real complex and.
But you're saying that over the last five years, we've seen decreases?
It has come, it has come down.
Nationally, the population's increased, but it's relative to the other communities that you said. If Charlotte goes bonkers, then they're going to give them a blind share of the money, so.
Yeah, they start with a big bucket of money, and they say, okay, we got to give so much to North Carolina, so much to Virginia, and then they start doling it out, I guess. So, but we have absolutely no input into that.
He's tried for 40 years.
I've tried. I called the president, I called congressman. It does no good. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Rick?
Okay. All right, well, I'll be back in March, April, May, June, somewhere.
You gotta take 30 days off there, right?
Sir?
You gotta take 30 days off where you.
I do, yeah. And if I'm not here, Ms. Jennifer Cannon will be here, so she's following me around to see what I do.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move on then. On our agenda, the report and recommendations of the City Manager, Mr. Hillbrand.
Mayor, Council, a couple items for information. First, I'll start with events. The mayor mentioned Black History Month. Some of the events we're having at our facilities include, this Saturday, February 8th, there's a movie called The Six Triple Eight. That's going to be shown at 4 o'clock at MLK Center, and the movie tells the story of the only US Women's Army Corps, a unit of color stationed overseas, that takes on a possible mission during World War II. And the movie is based on a true story. The next item, you have on February 20th, the Annual Quiz Bowl and Essay Contest at 6 o'clock, and then again, that's at MLK Center. Then on Monday, the 24th of February, they're having an American Red Cross Blood Drive from 2 to 6, and that's at the MLK Center as well. And you can call the rec center there to go back and get an appointment. The Tourism Development Authority will meet on Thursday, February 6 at 4 o'clock, and that's at Third Floor City Hall. The City-Council Service Committee will meet on Monday, February 10 at noon at the Boyle Civic Center. The Economic Development Advisory Committee will meet on Tuesday, February 11 at 8:15 a.m., and that's at the J. H. Boyle Civic Center as well. The ABC Board will meet on Wednesday, February 12 at 2 o'clock. The Business Advisor Board will meet on Thursday, February 13, 6 p.m., and that's Third Floor City Hall. And then the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee will meet on Monday, February 17 at 6 o'clock. And feel, is that going to be at Mulberry, Mulberry Rec? So, if you wanted to attend that, 6 o'clock on the 17th. And that's really all I have tonight for items, unless you have questions.
Any questions, Mr. Hillbrand, concerning any upcoming events? All right, no items for council action. Any report and recommendations from our City Attorney, Mr. Rohr?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your service.
Congratulations on that.
Chapel Hill, what?
Yeah, I was made State Bar counselor, so I'm, I'm the representative for Burke Caldwell and Catawba Counties for the State Bar, so it's an honor.
Congratulations. Congratulations for that. We appreciate it. All right, I don't have any report. I think I've already talked about everything from mayor's office. Anything from any of our council members tonight that would like to add?
I know, it's been open for a while, the floor at the Mulberry Rec. I went by there today to look at it. It's beautiful.
It's getting a lot of play, I think, at it, Phil.
Yeah, we'll have a ribbon cutting down there sometime, waiting on the pickleball course to be completed, too. I think this week they'll get to that with the weather warming up, so fingers crossed, but we'll have something hopefully on that this week.
We've got several ribbon cuttings we want to do when it gets warm enough to do them. Good, a lot of good things happening in the community. All right, anything else to come before us tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.